The meeting of the Greenfield zoning board appeals on Thursday, November 18th, 2021 at 7:00 PM via WebEx is now open. This meeting is being recorded. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Anybody else recording? Mary Byrne, are you recording?
Uh, no, I'm just taking notes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I think that was it for that. Right. So, uh, first up is the application. Hold on. The application of Sunbug Solar WM LLC for property located at 75 Prospect Street, assessors tax map 53, lot 11, which is located in the urban residential zoning district. Very special permit pursuant to sections 200-4.4 C19, 200-5.3 E2, 200-8.3 and 200-8.4, the zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of a 11,745 kilowatt DC solar PV array, 66 panels on the roof of a carport structure with a 20% reduction of the required setback 10 feet to eight feet at this location. Um, now, somebody is here for 75 Prospect Street, correct?
That's right.
Uh, you might need to turn your volume up a little. I'm not sure.
Let me see, how's that?
That's much better. Great. All right. So, um, if, if you want to listen, I'll go through my little spiel here. Um, so in a moment. Well, I, I kind of skipped ahead a little. Uh, anyways, we read the notice of hearing, which I just did. Um, after that, we'll introduce ourselves, the members of the board sitting on this, and you'll introduce yourself. Uh, and then you'll tell us what it is you want to do, where, why. Uh, from time to time, the board may have questions. At a certain point, uh, we'll open it up to public comment. It is not a Q and A. It is a public comment section. Once that is done, we go back, we wrap up any other questions we have. And we will make a decision tonight. Um, we have another public hearing at 7:15. So we will come back to this most likely. Okay, and, um, now, from the time a decision is made and once it has been signed by the members of the board, uh, it will be filed with the town clerk, city clerk. On the time it's filed with city clerk, there's a 20-day appeal period in which anybody feels aggrieved by the actions of the board may appeal to a higher court. If it's the tone of the 20-day appeal period, all appeals have been settled or there are none, then you can go ahead and do what we say you can do. Um, of course, you can do anything in between there, but it's at your risk. Um, do you understand that process?
Yes, understood.
All right. So, uh, the members of the board sitting are, uh, we got, who, uh, we got that? We got that? Well, we don't have Julia, is that correct there? Not saying her. Right?
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, that's correct. Uh, no, Julia.
Uh, just making sure. I don't want to leave her out. Okay, the members of the board sitting are Mark Maloney, James Nguyen, Peter Wozniak, uh, Deborah Jelks and Walter Boyd, and you are?
I'm Chris Graisman with Sunbug Solar.
Okay, so, uh, Chris, go ahead and tell us all about it, please.
Great. So we've got a, the proposal is for basically a car, carport or parking canopy that will house a, you know, 11 and three-quarter kilowatt solar array.
Yep.
The reason for that locate, the reason that we're trying to get it is far east in this case towards that line is to kind of pick them conform aesthetically with the driveways and, uh, a lot in general. So our hope is to have it pushed as far east as allowable. And I think Eric recommended not trying to get a variance less than eight feet when we chatted some months ago.
A variance, did you say?
Or a, um, special, to not try to, not try to go less than eight feet in a, in this process.
Right, 20%. Go ahead.
20%.
Yep, keep going.
Um, I think, yeah, what other informa-, what other info would you like? So this will be a, this will be a timber-framed structure, so wood, regional hu-, regional wood, timber-framed. Have a standing seamer, screw-down metal roof.
Yeah, what's the pitch on it?
Flush mounted to the top. And we'll have a short transmission trench from the southeast corner, the southeast post of that structure that'll go underground and to the, uh, elec-, to the electrical service in the building. Um, we'll have footings in that, in that, um, in the plan. None of the footings in this instance would be within the, they would all be within the 10-foot setback. So what would be in the 20% would all be overhang from the roof.
Edge of the roof.
Yeah, that's right.
What's the pitch on the roof?
The pitch is it's 412. I just want to double-check that because I
Okay.
I forgot.
All right, I, I do not recall seeing the trench for the cable. Did I miss it or was it not on there?
That that was not drawn in the, it's on the page labeled plans. It's loosely shown, but it's not a, it wasn't in the, um, aerial with the property lines.
Where does it enter the house? Where does it enter the house?
That will enter the house on the re-, on the northmost, so the rear western corner.
Yep, okay.
So if you look at the back of the garage, it'll enter that back corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I see. All right.
There's a crawl space under that section of the, of the garage that connects to the basement.
Yeah, uh, now I, yeah, all right. I see it. Yeah, okay. All right, um, and what is the height uh, off the ground of the bottom of the roof?
The map, the, the tallest point will be 14 feet. That will actually be toward, because, because of the, the direction the lot faces, the tallest point will actually be on the northern part of the structure.
Yeah.
The southern part will be nine, nine, roughly nine feet to the, to the drip line.
Okay, okay, yeah, um. Hold on one second, let me let me whip this out. Yep, I got it. Okay, um, that's all I got. Um, so why don't we go down the line? And, uh, if you have questions, you can ask. So, uh, Jim Nguyen?
We have some correspondence I'd like to read.
Um, now, let's get some questions first, and then we'll read the correspondence.
Hey, uh, what's the estimate life of this installation?
The warranty period, so it technically will be, we, we refer to as the useful life is 25 years for all the products. So all the products incorporated into that will have a 25-year warranty.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
So you, Jim, are you good?
What?
You're all set. Okay. Peter, close the act, please.
Quick question. Is, is there any reflection off the panels that might impact the neighbors adjacent to this property?
These will, all these panels will have a, um, have a coating, anti-reflective coating on them. There'll be some, but nothing compared, you know, it'll be less than glass. So they'll have they began using anti-reflective coating partially for FFA reasons, but so they'll be relatively low glare.
Okay.
And, and the angle of the roof is pretty low.
It's pretty low. That's right.
Yeah. Um,
That's the only question I have.
All right, thanks, Peter. Um, Deborah Jelks.
Um, I just, a real quick question on the height, because I was looking at the diagram earlier. Um, I see the 14 feet on the front, but it looks like it's a seven foot five on the back. I'm at the very last picture.
I think that is to the B, to the, um,
Under side of the beam?
The underside of the beam.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Was, was that the answer you were looking for, Deb?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I see.
Because it was going to be really low otherwise, so I was just double-checking.
And this is going to be a new structure, right, Chris?
That's correct.
Yep, okay. Um, and Walter Boyd, please.
I have, uh, a question about that 14-foot height in the back. And that means that uh, based on the pitch, it's still going to, uh, have an impact on the amount of sunlight that reaches the neighbor's property. Is that correct?
In terms of shading to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Each, well, it definitely won't to the property to the west. And to the east, I believe it borders a, um, uh, I can't remember if it's a garage or a shed on along the line to the east. So I think if anything, it would be towards the structure on the property to the east. I just didn't, I'm just going to switch.
I, I was thinking more to the north, but, uh, you're saying that's just not close enough.
Yeah, that's right. Yep, the setback would take, uh, that would something I would have to model exact, I wouldn't want to sit, I won't, don't want to tell you that for certain. If we look at the solstice angle with the winter, it may I'm trying to, I'm looking at the set, the total setback would go something like 17 feet. So it should still be clear of the line even at the winter solstice.
Okay, and you were talking about a 25-year warranty on the solar part of it, but the underpinnings is wood.
Yep.
Um, I would imagine that that's going to require some maintenance to make sure that, uh, it doesn't, uh, deteriorate over that 25-year period.
Yep, that's right.
Drew, how long, I'm sorry, Walter, are you done?
I think I am.
Okay, I'm, I'm not rushing. I just
No, no, I think I, 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 I went out there and I looked at it because I have an interest in the solar, having one in my backyard, and I was just surprised that, um, it would fit into a space like that in such an area that seemingly doesn't have a lot of sunlight. So I'm glad they're able to do it.
Yep, yep. Well, you know, again, uh, you know, an advantage of the design that, um, it's getting the overhead stuff is not really geared to catch the angles as much as most that we have seen. So, um, anyways, okay. Uh, before we go to public comment, Jim, you want to read some correspondence, please?
I do. Uh, from the planning board, voted four to zero to forward a positive recommendation for the ZBA and has no issues with this request. For the fire prevention officer, no comments or issues with this request. From the engineer and superintendent, comments or issues with this request. From the board of health, no comments or issues with this request. Have one letter from an abutter. This is from Al Norman in 21 Grinnell Street, wishes to be recorded and supported request for solar installation submitted by our neighbor at 75 Prospect Street. That's it.
So he was in support of it?
He was in support of it.
Okay, just double-checking. Okay, uh, Chris, anything else you want to add right this second? You're muted.
I think that covers it.
Okay, so now we'll, uh, come to the public comment of tonight's festivities. So anybody want to make a public comment on the proposal for the installation of uh, solar panels on top of a carport at 75 Prospect Street? I'm hearing nothing. If you want to make a comment, you just have to give us your name and where you live. No, okay, then we're going to close the public comment portion of this hearing at 7:15. Uh, and I want to note that Julia Popkin is indeed with us. Um, so, uh, okay, so in order to keep on schedule, because it's rare, um, anybody else have any questions for 75 Prospect Street? Walter, you give me a thumbs up or no, you're just adjusting your thing. I understand. Um, okay, Chris, anything else you want to add? We'll come back, like I said, we'll come back to tonight. We'll make a decision. Don't worry. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's move on now. Um, is somebody here for 49 Bank Row?
Uh, yes, sir. My name is Brent White from White Engineering, and also throwing us this evening is the applicant, Amon Cowherd, and her attorney, James McMahon.
James McMahon. He's the bearded guy. Okay, and
Your two of mine's red, so it's not as easy to see.
Yeah, that's all right. And Brent there, okay, just trying to put everybody together. Were you here earlier? Did you hear how the process works?
Yes, we did, sir.
All right, so I don't need to go through it again, right?
Oh, sir.
Okay, okay, that's great. All right, so, uh, the clerk will read the notice of hearing, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Greenfield zoning board appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November 18th, 2021 at 7:15 PM via WebEx on the application Smokey Leaf LLC. Uh, care of Ammon Core for property located at 45-49 Bank Row, assessors tax map 51 lot 18, which is located in the central commercial CC Zona District. Special per puit pursuant to section 200-4.7 C21, 200-8.3 and 200-8.4 on zoning ordinance in order to allow a marijuana retail establishment at this location.
Okay, um, something I think we should straighten out. Um, we're really talking about 49 Bank Row, correct? Eric?
Yes, sir.
It looks like the tax address doesn't match up with the, uh, mailing address. There's a discrepancy there.
It's Greenfield, but the actual physical structure is 49. Right?
Yeah, yes, this is German. Uh, we worked that out with the inspector buildings. The address had some issues. It is now definitely 49 Bank Row, parents against the year.
Right, that's good. Um, by the way, you're, you're a little low on volume, just to let you know. Okay, um, so the members of the board sitting, where, where's she go? Where's Julie? Okay, there we go. Um, let's see. Yeah, members of the board sitting are Jim Nguyen, Peter Wozniak, Deborah Jelks, Walter Boyd, and Julia Popkin. And now I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself again, Mr. White.
Yes, uh, my name is Brent White from White Engineering in Pittsfield, Massachusetts.
Okay, and you're, you're the engineer on the project, so you're probably going to do a lot of the talking.
I hope.
Yeah, okay. All right, and Mr. McMahon is the attorney. And Amar, is that how you say? Okay, that's fine. And you're muted too. We all, I think it always mutes if you're not actually speaking at the
Ammon Core, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
Yes, I was talking. I didn't realize it, but yes, I'll keep myself unmute just, just so you don't hear any disturbing.
Yep, no, no, that's fine. If we, if we have a question specifically for you, um, that's fine. So we do our best and there we go. Okay, so, uh, Brent, go ahead, talk all about it.
Uh, thank you very much. So again, the, the proposal for you this evening again is the repurposing of an existing structure for the purposes of, of a cannabis dispensary. Um, formerly was, uh, was a dance studio here, and we have, uh, appeared, uh, and appeared before the planning board and received a, a positive review of the product itself. Um, ultimately, the, the, the nature of the proposal is to recreate again, the storefront that is on Olive Street will serve as the main entrance uh, for the proposed dispensary. There is a paved off-street uh, parking lot on the property. Uh, when we first submitted the application, we did receive some, uh, review comments from the uh, Department of Public Works and were provided with the, the city's design standards. And after review of the site configuration and topography, have elected to eliminate any proposed off-street parking other than to designate a loading zone for, uh, product coming into and out of the dispensary itself. Uh, one of the improvements that we added to the application with that supplement was to also propose a bike rack uh, for patrons of the dispensary that's going to be closest to the sidewalk, uh, closest to the public entrance of the dispensary itself. Um, also, since we've appeared before the planning board, we have, uh, prepared some, uh, updated elevations. Uh, really, there, there's very little that's going to change with the building on the exterior other than, uh, painting. Um, I think a repurposing or reskinning of the, uh, the canopy of the front entrance and some down lighting that will be shielded, so there will be no, uh, light pollution off, uh, the property itself other than to illuminate on the public sidewalk leading to the dispensary itself. Uh, we provided a comprehensive application that addressed each of the specific points uh, related to the cannabis use that we're happy to, uh, elaborate or, or clarify any questions on that you may have. Uh, we've gone through the first step with respect to the Cannabis Control Commission. Uh, that was a requirement of our ability to make this application before you this evening. Uh, we have received, uh, an endorsement of our security plan from the chief of police, and have received no other, uh, negative feedback, at least, uh, that I'm aware of from municipal officials. And we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, and thank you for your time.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, I'm going to ask a few questions and let everybody else do most of the hard work here. Um, the, the, so just to make sure, oh, oh, great, yeah, great. Okay, I love computers. All right. Uh, just to make sure, uh, the, the main entrance, the only entrance will be on Olive Street, correct?
For, for customers, that is correct. There will be
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're talking that way. Okay, you've got, uh, your interior, uh, diagram chose to flow through uh, with, with an exit for the customers on the bank row, correct?
Correct. I can pull that plan up as well if that would be helpful.
Um, wait a second, if somebody wants it, that's fine, but the board members all, all have it, so um, just want to make sure we, we're, we're talking about the same thing. Now, the, the Dance Supplies Store, is that actually still in business?
Uh, no, sir. And really, the, the intention with the architectural plans was to identify that that was going to be a safe, a space permanently separate from uh, the cannabis use and not subject to the special permit.
No, well, congratulations. It, it was clear. That's, that's a good thing. That's fine. Okay, um, the lighting, I think, I can't remember if I actually, yeah, so it, wall, wall packs, correct? Exterior, exterior lighting, yeah. Oh, uh, one thing that Eric mentioned in his memo, um, signage.
That is correct. So we have not finalized the, the final, um, signage scheme. Obviously, we have a very strict set of requirements from the Cannabis Control Commission, but with the updated architectural elevation that we submitted, we just wanted to represent that we plan to uh, repurpose the existing entry, likely have the name of the dispensary, um, on there, but no, uh, nothing offensive or anything that would be in conflict with the municipal sign ordinance or the Cannabis Control Commission requirements.
Okay, no problem. Yeah, have a picture of a dinosaur. That'll be good. Uh, the main, my main trust of my question is, since this is the special permit, uh, hearing, and you don't have a specific, uh, signage plan, my advice would be to simply any signs you have would follow that the, the CCC, uh, guidelines, and you wouldn't need to come back to us for a special permit for signage. See what I'm saying?
Done, thank you. Yes, sir.
That, that'll make everybody's life easier. Okay, um, now, yeah, we, we will take notice that the police chief, his memo, uh, is satisfied with security. Uh, and we don't usually talk too much about that in public meetings. Um, uh, the other stuff we'll get to when, uh, we read Eric's memo. Um, I think that's, oh, yeah, right, hours of operation. What are you looking for?
Uh, we've committed to certainly avoiding any hours outside of the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. I mean, I believe that was something we were
Guaranteed. Yeah, well, but for the permit, we're going to put hours for you, so we need to know what it is you're looking for, for an opening, a closing, and days of the week.
So we'd be looking to be open seven days a week from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Mm-hmm. Okay, um, right, that's all I got for now. So, um, uh, let's just go through one round of questions and then we can have, read the correspondence. So, Jim Nguyen, please.
Uh, I have a little concern about the traffic on Bank Row in front of Village Pizza. I know what it's like on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. It's almost like demolition derby. That's the only real concern I have.
Well, and, and the other thing, the board members need to remember, um, the updated parking plan is there is no parking. I mean, there's no there's no parking on the property for customers. So it's you know, street parking. Um, and I, I will say this now, we can talk about it later, but we have a very lengthy, uh, correspondence from the um, disabilities, uh, Eric, what is it?
Permission on disability access.
That was, I knew there was a C in there somewhere, uh, which it was based upon prior information where there was parking included, because the parking Oh, good lord. Oh, dog's throwing up. Yep, okay. That's right, bud. Go ahead. Yeah, I'll pick it up later. Oh, yeah, it was a giant one. Well, thank you, Greenfield. Never a dull moment here, Lonely House. Uh, the point with what was I talking about? Oh, oh, right, the Committee on Disability Access. Don't eat it. Is, um, so it, what they sent to us is very lengthy, and it doesn't really apply anymore. So, uh, Eric can talk about that a little bit later on too. But Jim, I think it's time for you to ask some questions, and I'm going to do a little picking up here. And as, uh, Jim, as the clerk, don't, no, hey, Murphy, don't eat it. Uh, you're taking over. Excuse me. Uh-huh. Yeah, I just love this so much.
Like I said, the only concern I had was the parking on Bank Row and the amount of traffic in front of Village Pizza. Somebody address that, or?
Sure. So we're going to be addressing parking in two ways, and I should just say a quick modification, uh, as I'm checking my notes. Uh, just briefly going back to hours, which I think is also germane to traffic and parking. We'd be looking to be open from 9:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Um, but in any case, uh, our main plan is to direct people to park in the parking facility next door. Um, we were asked to remove the parking from our, uh, from our original plan to help with loading and unloading and things of that nature. So we direct, you know, people to use that large parking facility in and out. If we notice there being an issue with parking, um, we'll have onsite security at all times when the facility is open. Um, they'd be able to also help with directing traffic and making sure traffic is flowing smoothly. Um, and if need be, that could also be something we could, could coordinate with the chief in his department. Um, luckily, you know, the, the novelty of cannabis shops has worn off and you know, while we all hope Ammon is as successful as possible, the lines down the block of people waiting to buy cannabis are pretty much a thing of the past. Um, your average dispensary has about 150 customers a day. With those operating hours, that works out to you know, low double digits of customers in any hour, which is pretty manageable traffic flow.
Okay, you know, what did you say the hours were going to be again, James?
Uh, I had said 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. It should be 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, seven days a week?
Seven days a week, yes.
Okay, Peter, you got questions?
Well, regarding the parking, I know there's no parking there, but, and again, I'm sure it'll get brought up later, but the Disability Commission talks about handicap access in it to the parking garage. Just reading their correspondence, if I interpret it correctly, it would be hard for a handicapped person to get from the parking garage to your shop, the way it's set up right now. And again, I'm sure that'll be addressed when that document gets reviewed. So that was, that was the major question I had, you know, regarding the, the application. In terms of operating hours, I, you know, Eric, what have we, what have we done for other types of facilities in terms of operating hours seven days a week? I think we've restricted it to lesser hours on a Sunday and, or had different hours?
Yes, the, uh, the weekend hours, Saturday and Sunday, you used, uh, the typical length of ten weekday hours.
Now, those are the que-, those are, those are my, my comments or questions.
Julia?
Um, I am also curious about the disability, um, that, the access from the parking garage, but I don't have any questions right now.
Uh, Deborah?
Hello, um, I, I do have a question. Um, how many employees are you looking to have and where will they be parked?
So we would also have the employees parked in the parking garage. Um, and we are expecting that there will be onsite at any one time, um, about 10 to 12 employees. Uh, I'm just looking at the number of POS stations right now. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and an express lane plus security and administrative staff. So, yeah, somewhere, somewhere around 10 to 12 employees on staff at any one time, which means, you know, given, uh, shift work and weekend and weekday shifts. Which means, you know, given, uh, shift work and weekend and weekday shifts, you're looking at having somewhere around. Thirty to thirty-five total employees.
Alright, thank you.
Walter?
Um, one question, uh, in the, uh. Document that we got, it says the required buffer has been, uh, established, and it says there are no. Uh, K to twelve public private schools are located within two hundred and fifty or five hundred feet of subject property. But the YMCA has a, uh, a preschool, uh, and it's darned close to five hundred feet from the, uh. Uh, applicant's property. Has, has that been taken into consideration?
Eric, can you answer that?
So I'll respond by saying that I, uh, when this was adopted initially, a map was created to show buffers two hundred and fifty and five hundred feet from all. K through twelve schools, and YMCA did not show up, it's not on the list, um. So, it's not on the map as a school.
Well, it's licensed by the state and it, it is a school, so I'm just wondering if, if it makes a difference.
Well, the five hundred feet is potential, I know it wouldn't be within two hundred feet, but it.
No.
The Board of Health regulation is five hundred feet, so we would need to take that measurement.
Okay, um. So, I, I do have a question for the applicant, and, and, um, maybe it's not, this isn't the right time, but maybe it is, why Greenfield? And, uh.
So, I can at least say for Amin, and then she may, may choose to add, um, she has an existing location in Pittsfield. And is looking to expand her footprint, um, to have two in Berkshire County would really, you know, one would cannibalize the business from the other. So, this is a phenomenal location, it's not too far from her existing business. Um, it's a, it's a great site for it in terms of size, in terms of parking, in terms of visibility. Um, and, you know, she's looking to really replicate the success of her existing store. Um, and thinks that, you know, this would be a very similar situation, so, um, like everything else, it's location, location, location. Um, and I should say throughout the process, we found, um, working with Eric in his office has been an incredibly easy. And incredibly open and transparent process, um, it's been fantastic working with the city so far, so. Um, you know, finding Greenfield was a bit of a stroke of luck in finding that this location was available, but. Now that we've gotten to know the city a little bit better, it's, it's been an absolute pleasure, you know, getting to this point and working with everyone in the city.
Eric, do you wanna touch in on the lengthy letter from the Disability Commission, or we all sent on that?
The, the, yeah, the letter on disability from them, the review comments were, were sent to us before the change, when there was parking shown there. They've since revised the plan, do not show any parking there, it's a loading area now, um. But there was another comment in there, which I can look in this file here about potentially using the parking garage. Bring it up here. Yeah, it, it says it's a suggestion to the city to investigate installing an automatic door opener. Serving the handicap ramp on the Olive Street side of the parking garage.
Yeah, um, which is well beyond the scope of the board and this special permit. Um, but we can, we will forward this on to. The mayor's office and the DPW, and they can. Take whatever actions they feel appropriate in regards to the parking garage. True? Eric, this is where you nod. So Eric, I think you're at home, and I think the wind is blowing because your mic keeps fading in and out, and. That's how internet service around here works these days.
I mean, I got three letters to read before we get to public comment.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that, Jim?
A fire prevention, no comments or issues with this project. Plan and Board, three dot O, positive recommendation, no, uh, comments or issues. And the Health Department, no comments or issues with this, uh, proposal. That's it.
Um, did, I'm, I'm sorry, I was dealing with the dog, um, not my dog, my son's dog, and he's not here, gee, a shock, um. Did you read Eric's memo?
No, I did not.
Okay, let's, why don't we do that? Do you have Eric's memo?
I'm gonna check right now.
Yeah.
Eric, this is the one on building, uh. Building elevations?
No, oh, you know what, I got it in front of me, let me try. Um, so, memo of the zoning Board of Appeals from Eric Torog, Director of Planning and Development. I'm not muted, am I? No. Uh, dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, edit twenty-one, twenty-one, uh. Okay, review comments, proposed marijuana retail establishment at forty-five Bank Row. Uh, yeah, that's not gonna help, okay, there we go. If the board is inclined to approve the application, then the Department of Planning and Development recommends the following conditions of approval, one. The applicant shall redesign the off-street parking area to meet the design standards of the GPW. Two, delivery vehicles shall be limited to box trucks or smaller tractor-trail trucks shall be prohibited. Three, the applicant shall submit three full-size copies of the revised plan set. To the Department of Planning and Development within thirty days of approval. Zoning District Property Forty-five Bank Row, Sessions Map Fifty-One Lot Eighteen, Zoning Central Commercial. Above reference parcel located within Central Commercial Zoning District Properties to the north, south, east, and west are also zoned to CC, so there's no cross. Zone, uh, issues. Use, the proposed use of marijuana retailers is used allowed by special permit with site plan review and approval. From Zoning Board of Appeals within the, the Central Commercial District. The applicant has submitted a complete application to the Cannabis Control Commission for marijuana retail establishment at this location. Host community agreement, community outreach meeting, City Greenfield through the mayor's office has entered into a host community agreement. The Smokey Leaf LLC dated March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, the project proponents held the required. Community Outreach Meeting on June seventh, twenty twenty-one. Oh, good lord. Okay, um. To determine conformance of section two hundred dash seven point one seven zoning ordinance in the Board of Health Regulations. Relative to marijuana establishments at distance measurements in nearest K twelve public private school. Was done using the city's geographic information system. No K twelve public private schools are located within two hundred and fifty or five hundred feet of the subject property. The second congregational church located sixteen court squares located within three hundred feet of the subject property. And therefore will need to be notified of the public hearing. Security plan, a security plan has been submitted to and approved by Police Chief Robert Hegg. Site access parking, so Eric, is this kind of not, uh, cogent and, or not, uh?
It is dated because it was written before the revisions.
Right, so I can skip this part.
Yes.
Thank you. Hours of operation, uh, right. The appointment is not proposed specifically hours of operation, but it stated in the application materials that they've worked. With us on hours of operation, with no operations, rather between ten PM and seven AM. Dimensional requirements setbacks, proposed marijuana retail facility, all dimensional or step-up requirements zoning ordinance, with the exception of the design standards. For off-street parking, no longer an issue. Open space slash landscaping, minimum landscaped open space requirement under current standards zoning ordinance with Central Commercial District fifteen percent. Currently, the site is completely covered with impervious service with zero percent open space, however, since this is a redevelopment project. This standard does not need to be met, the applicant is not proposing any new landscape. The lighting plan has not, uh, plan has not been submitted, there are two existing decorative city light poles. Along the frontage of forty-five Bank Row light the property, signage. The applicant has not submitted any details on signage for the facility. Any proposed signage above and beyond the maximum requirements of zoning ordinance. Shall require a special permit from the zoning board appeals, all signs for this facility also needs to meet the requirements of. Uh, promulgated by Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission. So, um, I think if the board is inclined to grant the permit. Uh, in addition to the three, uh, conditions Eric recommends. I think a fourth condition should be signage will need to, um. Meet, uh, city requirements and CCC requirements, not to exceed, um. And I think that's it for that, alright, so anyways, that's Eric's memo to the board, um. Everybody had a chance to ask questions one round, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, before the dog throws up again, he seems to be sleeping, um. Um, uh, Mr. White, where are you? There we are, um, so, anything you or Mr. McMahon or the more wanna add, anything else?
Uh, I, just first with respect to the, the, um, disabled parking, there certainly that, that's something that's, uh, personally very, very important to me, and again. Initially, we had attempted to provide, um, on-street, um, or pardon, off-street onto our parking lot, uh, the ability for an accessible space. But admittedly, we, we, we knew when we proposed that it was a, a, a tight, uh, dimension, and when we received the city's design standards, uh, we, we, we looked at. Um, parallel parking, angled parking, and just unfortunately, the space between the face of the building and the property boundary. And the dimension, it, it just was not gonna be practical or able to comply, um, with respect to the disability or the. Architectural Access Board requirements for off-street parking to get to the, uh, to the sidewalk itself, I would note. There is, uh, on-street parking on Bank Row along with a signalized crosswalk, uh, as well as a brand-new sidewalk leading to the building here, so there certainly is the ability for. Um, patrons to enter the dispensary other than the parking lot, um, I think with regards to the zoning requirements of the CC. Uh, district here, I think it's understood that parcels are limited in size and the ability to provide, um, off-street parking here, and certainly the, um. Uh, the applicant through their staff will work to certainly accommodate any customers, make it as easy as possible for them to enter the facility, so that is certainly our. That is our intention going forward, and James and Amman, I'm happy to, if you have anything else that you wish to, uh, wish to add.
Um, nothing for me, the only thing I would say is that signage condition, you know, perfectly acceptable to us, uh. The only reason we haven't showed a finalized plan is we're just still workshopping a few different logos. But those logos in and of themselves still need to meet the CCC's requirement. Um, obviously, nothing that could be attractive or enticing to children, nothing that uses colloquial terms of cannabis. Um, nothing that has any images of the product or anything like that. Um, so, you know, anything we would do would be very heavily restricted in terms of.
Right.
Time placement manner by the CCC, and then, um, wouldn't be proposing any signage outside of the city's signage code.
Right, no, and I, that, that's fine, um, and that's the advantage of having the CC, uh, with their own regulations on it too, so, that's fine. Um.
They would also be remiss if we didn't, uh, just address the fact that we're, we're bringing a, a retail establishment back to life in the center of. Of Greenfield, and I know, uh, every, every community I work in, they're always looking for, not only are we looking for, for new businesses that, to come in, but we're looking for new business to possibly. Uh, bring to life, uh, properties that have either been abandoned or, um, no longer in use, so we're, we're very excited about being able to, uh. Hopefully provide that opportunity to the city as well.
And just to piggyback a little off of Bren, as part of our HCA. We've committed to bidding the workout locally in terms of doing the redevelopment as well as vendor services. And we've also committed to within all bounds of equal employment law and everything else being equal, um, hiring locally as well, so. Have, put some Greenfield people to work, you know, doing the, uh, the rehab, and then put some Greenfield people to work inside the shop, we're looking forward to making this something really. You know, that people can take pride in, in the city and representative of the community.
So. Your, your expectation is to have about, based on other, uh, numbers. They have about a hundred and fifty customers a day, maybe, average?
Pretty average for a cannabis shop, um, I mean, there's some that do significantly more, there's some that do significantly less, but when you break down. The CCC's data of the number of operating stores versus the number of individual transactions, it works out to be roughly a hundred and fifty a day.
And you're aware that there are, uh, there have been four or five other, uh. Establishments permitted in Greenfield.
Correct.
It's just that, except for one, I don't think any others are actually operating yet. Um, but just so long as you're aware, okay.
Amin is in, uh, Pittsfield right now, which is an even more competitive environment, I believe there's eight in Pittsfield, and. She's thriving based off her product selection, based off her customer service, and based off the design of her shop, um. So, we're, we're happy to see other people in the industry, but, um, you know, I think she'll, she'll rise to the top here as well.
Yeah, okay, alright, um, so Jim, all the correspondence has been read?
Yes, we haven't done public comment yet.
Ah, okay, so why don't we go ahead and do that right now? So, let's open the public comment of, uh, the special permit hearing at seven forty-five. So, uh, public comment is now open, you need to identify yourself and, uh, your address. If you wanna make a public comment, you don't have to make a public comment, but, anybody? Yep, not, not quite the big draw that it used to be, huh? Alright, sort of like the, you know, the fourth moon shot, it's like, yeah, oh, those guys are going to the moon again, right, okay. Uh, then, last chance for public comment, as we do have other stuff to do. Okay, saying no more public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment section at seven forty-six, oh, there's a good one. Um, okay, so board members, we'll just go down the board, if you have any other. Questions, comments, or clarifications needed, uh, so Jim Winn?
Not at this time.
Okay, Peter Wozniak?
Going back to the handicap access, is the main entrance accessible for wheelchair occupants? And have you, did you see the document prepared by the, uh, Disability Commission for Greenfield, the applicant?
I have that.
I, I was not about that document either.
Well, when I look at the, the elevation from the photos, it appears that the sidewalk on Olive Street is going slanting towards Bank Row.
Yep.
Is, is the entrance going into this, this shop or your store? Gonna have the ability for a wheelchair to access your entrance and go to it with? Okay.
So your entrance will be handicapped accessible?
Yes, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be allowed to do this buildup without that.
Yeah, wrong.
We should also say the entire store is at one grade. And part of the counter will be at a thirty-six inch height to have a wheelchair accessible counter as well.
Okay, Peter, does that answer some of your questions?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay, anything else, Peter?
No, that's it.
Okay, um.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, what are the operating hours, Mark, we've in the past have not, you know, granted the. Requested hours from nine AM to ten PM, is, are we gonna be consistent with other operating hours, or is this gonna be?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that's fine, um, the, the CCC restricts between ten and seven in the morning. Um, generally, most of ours are not quite that early or quite that late. But that's gonna be for the board members to, um. That should also be, I was, I was gonna say, that should be the fifth condition, hours of operation. So, um, nine AM to ten PM, seven days a week, is a lot of hours of operation. Um, I know that we. We restricted one, two, at least, um. But, you know, again, that's for the board to decide, so the, the board can make the, that a condition. It just can't be punitive or anything, but it can be based on, you know, community standards, um. So, my advice will be to think about that while we, we go on, is that all right, Peter?
Yeah, you asked a question, Eric, have we tracked what we've allowed other users to, to have for operating hours, Eric?
I think, I, I think we have, Eric.
We do, but I don't have the list in front of me.
Cause I know, I know we haven't, we haven't allowed Sunday from nine AM to ten PM on a Sunday.
Right.
We have not.
Um, if I may, um, hi Peter, and, and respectfully, uh, everyone else. Uh, I just wanna add a little bit here. So, we are, as James had mentioned, um, we have a current dispensary here in Pittsfield. We're trying to, um, of course, expand and green, I have visited Greenfield a few times and definitely liked. The vibe of the town, we are a small business, so we're always looking for that small-town feeling. And, um, so, that's what attracted us towards Green, um, Greenfield. But in terms of the exact location, um, it's, it's, it's the middle of, you know, middle, it's, it's a really good location, it's a. A, a bigger building that we are currently in right now, um, and in terms of answering the hours question. On Sundays, um, we, we are proposing ten AM to eight PM, so it's, uh, earlier close. Uh, Monday through Saturday is what we're proposing, nine AM to ten PM, and the only reason we do that is, one, we are a small business. Uh, we're a minority, and just as, um, you know, it was mentioned before, we will have, you know. Uh, we're a minority and just as, um, you know, it was mentioned before, we will have, you know, um, other, um, businesses open in the, for the cannabis industry and just from a small business, if they can, um, open the extra hours just to, you know, remain consistent and, um, successful, you know? Hope that makes sense.
My concern is if, if, my concern is if we've permitted others for a specific hour and we change those and we expand the hours, I would think the other operation will be coming back to us with a request for some similar operating criteria.
Right. Yeah, no, I think, uh, mostly on Sunday, we said, twelve to six or twelve to eight. Um, I know obviously none of them will go past ten. And none of them will start before nine. So, you know, it's up to.
I'm not averse to these hours. I just think we need to be consistent from permit to permit.
Yep, I agree. That's fine. All right, but let's, let's keep going here.
That's all I have.
Yep, that's for the board discussion. All right, uh, Deborah Jokes?
Uh, nothing that we haven't already started to talk about.
Okay, all right, fine. Uh, Walter Boyd?
Yeah, I'm still hung up on the question that I asked and I, I'm looking at our zoning bylaw and, uh, it indicates that, uh, no marijuana establishment shall be located within a radius of two hundred and fifty feet of a pre-existing public or private school. And yet, it has the editor's note, the Greenfield Board of Health may require a greater setback distance. And the question was whether the, uh, preschool, which is licensed by the state at the YMCA, is within that five hundred foot, uh, uh, distance.
Is it five hundred or is it three hundred?
Well, in, 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 uh, Eric's, um, memo, uh, he refers to two hundred and fifty or five hundred feet of the subject property. And that's what I'm trying to determine is the, is the over two hundred and fifty feet within the purview of the, uh, Board of Health, not under the purview of the zoning, uh, Board of Appeals.
That's a great question. And the five hundred feet is a board health regulation and not in the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is two hundred and fifty feet. I don't have the legal answer to your question.
Well, I think I have the physical answer, which is it's more than five hundred feet.
It's close. It's close. It's real close.
Well, but, you know, you, you can't, well, I suppose.
But we ought, but we ought to know that when we're, uh, reviewing this. That's all my, my point.
Right, well, the, yeah, the, uh, the Board of Health thing is a, is a fly in the ointment. Um, but they, they also had no issue.
And endorsed it.
Right. Somebody just interrupted me?
I'm sorry. I, I thought you were finished speaking. I was just gonna say I thought the.
Uh, no, it's almost like we're married. It's almost like my wife does. She's taking a breath. I'm not done. All right. Um, the point is, from our perspective as the ZBA, it's two hundred and fifty feet. And the YMCA preschool is clearly beyond that. Um, you know, I mean, it's a hundred yards from the end of, uh, from the parking garage to the top of Hope Street, uh, Olive Street and Hope. Um, and so that's three hundred feet right there. Um, yeah, sticky work. So, and again, the, the Board of Health had no issues, as they said in their correspondence. No issues or concerns with the application. So, yeah, I guess they have the ability to flag that for five hundred feet and they didn't. So, we can only go by what we have and.
Yep. That's what I wanted, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I mean, I agree with you. Um, but yeah, if, if they wanted to make an issue of it, then they should have or could have for sure. Um, so was that, was that the only thing you had, Walter?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay. Julia?
I don't have any other questions right now.
Okay. All right. So, uh, anything else, um, Smokey Leaf wants to add at this point? Not to begin, well, no, actually the board's not about to begin, but we're gonna wrap this up. So anything else you wanna add beyond what you've already said?
I would just add two brief points. Um, again, you know, confirming the Board of Health had their opportunity to comment on the YMCA and declined. Um, but the regulations were for K through twelve schools. Um, the Y Academy on Main advertises and describes itself as a preschool, um, not offering kindergarten services. So it doesn't seem like it would fall within that threshold, um, even if it was close to the line. Um, and the CCC and the mass state cannabis codes no longer restrict operation within five hundred feet of places where children congregate. Um, so I think, you know, we, regardless of which way you cut it, we meet the threshold on that, whether it's distance, whether it's, you know, age of operation or whether it's, um, you know, the, the most current set of state regulations. Um, the other thing I would add, just in consideration of the hours, um, as Amin has described, um, we understand the board's desire to have consistency between operations. Um, but other operations in Greenfield are larger, more well-funded, multi-state operators who can compete on price and compete on being vertically integrated. This is a family-owned, woman-owned, woman-led, minority-owned business. And being able to be open a little bit later or a little bit earlier is one of the things that's really led to her success in Pittsfield. And one of the things that's really allowed her to be competitive with those larger corporate cannabis, multi-state operators. Um, so while we completely understand the board's desire for consistency, um, we would just ask the board to also keep that in mind. Um, and, you know, just because the hours are granted for one, if any other group wanted to come back and ask for extended hours, that would be a business decision on their side. Um, and, you know, Amin has no say in how their businesses are run. So we would just ask for that consideration from the board as part of their deliberation.
Okay, uh, anybody else from Smokey Leaf?
I do not. Just wanna thank you for your time.
Yeah, well, at this point, the only thing I would add is, you know, we are, we're here to, you know, turn this building into a functional retail storefront, but at the same time, we're here to help the community, not in any way hinder it or hurt it. Um, it's all about hiring local. We have done the same thing with Pittsfield. We have hired local. Uh, we have maintained this sense of, um, community and family. Um, and that's what we are seeing in our customer base. That's what's and makes us stand apart. We have a small space, but we have good feedback coming from our customer base that, you know, they like the spot and we're going to probably, um, keep the same theme in Greenfield. Just so there's consistency in businesses.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Uh, so we're gonna close the.
Mark, can I make one comment?
Uh, Jim, yep.
Yes. Uh, the American Legion, Monday through Saturday, ten to eight, Sunday, eleven to six.
Right. Okay.
That's Patriot Care, right?
Yeah. That's right. And ten, eight, and one to six, yep. Um, yeah, yep, yep, yep. And, you know, all good comments. The board's duty, its obligation is to the welfare of the entire town of Greenfield. Um, sometimes you need to ru- read the room and put while you're ahead. So, uh, I think, as you said, you've had a good experience with the planning department and with the town, uh, up to this point, and that, um, is the focus for you all. You submitted your application, um, without hours of operation and without signage. So we're going based upon the conversation we had tonight. And we'll go forward with that and do our best to be equitable uh, to all concerned. However, we also have some folks who are waiting and because they were first up, so we're going to go back and deal with seventy-five Prospect Street first. And then we will come back and deal with forty-nine Bank Row. Um, and Brent White, uh, are you, where are you from? Pittsfield?
Pittsfield, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. No, I, the, the package you put together was good. So, all right. Um, so no other questions from the board, right? Right? Yep, okay. So let's go to seventy-five Prospect Street, please. Make sure I got the right thing. There it is. Okay, so this is the discussion and decision on the application of Sunbug Solar WMN WM LLC for property located at seventy-five Prospect Street. Assessor's Tax Map fifty-three lot eleven, which is located in the urban residential zoning district. For special permit present sections two hundred dash four point four C nineteen, two hundred dash five point three, F two, two hundred dash eight point three, two hundred dash eight point four, the zoning order, ordinance in order to allow the installation of an eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-five kilowatt DC solar PV array, sixty-six panels on the roof of the carport structure with a twenty percent reduction of the required setback from ten feet to eight feet at this location. Who wants to start? Well, I'll start. Uh, I, I'd have no problems with it. Um, the, especially considering the twenty percent reduction is only, only really applies, the, the building structure uh, is, is within the setback, uh, outside of the setback. And the twenty percent is the overhanging roof, the flat panels, flattish panels I like. Um, they did show kind of free hand, but that's all right. Um, the trench, they're gonna lay the cable in. Um, and there is of course no exterior lighting or any of the rest of it. Um, I think we've done enough of these. It seems that the industry is making the anti-glare coating, um, just a, a part of doing business. Um, so that's also helpful. There were no objections from the town correspondents. There was no objections from any of the butters, one a butter, uh, sent a letter in support. So, um, I'm in favor. Okay, Jim?
Uh, I'm in favor of this. This will not adversely affect any of the other properties around it. You have my vote?
Okay, Peter Rosniak?
I'm in favor of it. Looks good.
Right. Deborah Jokes?
I have no concerns.
Okay, and Walter Boyd?
No concerns.
Okay, so somebody wanna make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for approval for the application at, by Sunbug Solar, uh, LLC property located at seventy-five Prospect Street Assessor's Map, fifty-one lot eleven, which is located in the urban residential zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections two hundred dash four point four C, C nineteen, two hundred dash five, that, dot three, E two, and two hundred eight point three and two hundred eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow for the installation of eleven point seven five kilowatt DC solar PVA, sixty-six panels on the roof of the carport structure with a twenty percent reduction of the required setback from ten feet to eight feet at this location.
As submitted in the application.
Yes, that's just submitted in the application.
I'll second that.
All right, I'm moving second. Is there any discussion on this? And further discussion, I should say.
No.
No, okay. All right, saying none, uh, we have to do a roll call vote. So, um, I'm going down the line, not alphabetically. Uh, Maloney votes yes. Jim Winn?
Yes.
Uh, Peter Rosniak?
Yes.
Deborah Jokes?
Yes.
And Walter Boyd?
Yes.
Okay, great. So motion passes and declared unanimous. Uh, so I don't think they're still with us anyways. Eric, are they? Sunbug folks?
I don't see them on the participation list.
Not see them.
Yep, okay, that's fine. But you can let it, you can let her know tomorrow.
For about a minute?
Say that again?
Do we have a seventh inning stretch for about one minute?
Uh, sure, I'll be generous. Let's make it three. All right, we're gonna take a, uh, we'll take a brief recess for a few minutes. So this is the discussion and decision on the application of, uh, there it is, of, uh, Smokey Leaf LLC for property located for already nine Bank Row Assessor's Tax Map fifty-one lot eighteen, which is located in the central commercial zoning district for a special prevent, special sections, two hundred dash four point seven. Is that a C? Yeah, C twenty-one, two hundred dash eight point three and two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a marijuana retail establishment at this location. Uh, before we get into it, Eric, um, since we're doing the site plan review too, do we have to do that separately?
No, it's all part of the, the, uh.
Part of that submitted in the packet. I mean, that was my thinking.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay, fine. Okay, so, uh, we'll go down the line. Jim?
My biggest concern is about the parking on Bank Row and, uh, amount of congestion is gonna be there, especially on Friday nights, Saturday nights. And then with the fire trucks coming down that way too, from the new fire station down Olive Street, I have great concerns.
Oh, but that's only for now. I mean, eventually when the new fire station's built on Main Street, they'll be going a different route, but.
Three years.
Yep, no, no problem. Okay, um, is that a deal breaker for you or anything?
Pardon me?
Is, is, uh, all right, so those are your concerns?
The parking, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but the parking is, is, is all town parking. It's nothing having to do with the store, right?
Right.
Okay, just the location. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, great. Um, yeah, 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 the, the applicants were very clear about they weren't, and that is very clear in the CCC regulations. No consumption of the product on premises. Of course, you got a half empty parking garage next door. Who knows what'll happen there. But again, not our issue, not their issue either. Um, okay, so Jim, all right, so Peter Rosniak, please.
Just the establishment of the operating hours. All those other issues, I'm, 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 I'm okay with.
Okay, so you're mostly concerned about the hours. Okay, um, and you heard, you heard the applicant's requests and you heard what Jim said we've done in the past. So is there, is there something you're looking for? You wanna talk about?
Well, I, I, you know, again, it'd be, it's good to offer additional hours. I just think we, as a board, have to be, understand that have some, some acknowledgement of what we're gonna do, cause we're, I'm sure we'll have more applications. You know, whatever we choose here because of this uniqueness, we're gonna have to consider something that's unique for another applicant that comes in.
Right, right. Um, and of course, you got one, two, three, three churches in the neighborhood that all have services on Sunday morning, um, which I believe was part of the discussion for Patriot Care back in the day. Um, but anyways, um, so Peter, when, when you hear other people, when you hear some more of the conversations about the hours, then i- if you, if, if we get to the point of making a motion with conditions, you can, you can, you're welcome to bring that up as a condition.
Okay.
All right, and other than that, you're all set, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good. Um, let's see. Yep, De- De- Deborah Jokes, please.
Uh, yeah, again, my, again, I, my only concern is that we're just, you know, as consistent, as fair as possible in regards to operating hours. The parking's been addressed, um, and, you know, it'd be great to have the building in use.
Yeah.
All right, um, okay, Walter, please.
I think that the, uh, the question of hours in my mind, uh, um, if we're concerned about congestion, the more hours that they're open, the less congestion there is. But I think that, uh, in terms of the consistency, we ought to, uh, have hours that are at least as favorable as any other, uh, uh, establishment had that came prior to, uh, our board.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and in terms of the, the parking i- in, in general and, and the congestion, uh, I, I, I hear what Jim is saying. Uh, but that definitely is an issue, uh, uh, for any establishment. And if you recall, when, uh, the, uh, dance studio was there, um, there were lots of people there around the, uh, the, the later afternoons, um, uh, on the weekends when the kids were getting. on the weekends when the kids were getting picked up and dropped off all the time. So this is not in inconsistent use or something that would be that different, except that now we have a parking garage that customers can go to. So I'm in favor of it. I I'd like to see maybe quarters given to the customers to so they can park in the garage. But, you know, that's a different issue.
Yeah, sure enough. You all set?
Yes.
Okay, and Julia, please. Popkin?
Yeah, I'm all set, too. I was also gonna point out that it seems like the parking garage would be a good solution, at least to cut down on any sort of concern around congestion. But I'm all set.
Okay. All right, so why don't we go ahead and have somebody make a motion? Don't everybody rush at once? Somebody who's actually sitting on it.
All right, so. All right, I hereby forward a motion. This is my first time doing it, so if I screw it up, Mark, just let me know.
No, no, just say that you move.
I move.
That the board accepts.
The board accept the application of Smokey Leaf LLC care of Amon Core. Hopefully, I spelled said your name correctly for property located at forty-five forty-nine Bank Row Assessors Test Tax Map fifty-one lot eighteen, which is located in the central commercial CC zoning district for special permit pursuant sections two hundred dash four point seven, C twenty-one, two hundred dash eight point three, and two hundred dash eight point four of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a marijuana retail establishment at this location with the following conditions.
There you go.
I think we've got some, or at least one.
So Jim, you want to read the Eric's recommendations?
Hang on one second. If the board is inclined to approve the application, then the Department of Plan and Development recommends the following conditions of approval. The applicant shall redesign the street parking area to meet the design standard of DPW.
So that's condition one.
Pardon me?
That's condition one.
That's condition one. Condition two, delivery vehicles shall be limited. Box trucks are smaller. Tractor trailers shall be prohibited. Condition number three, the applicant shall submit three full-size copies of the advice plan set at Department of Plan and Development within thirty days of approval. Those are the three conditions.
Right, and Peter's gonna make a motion for a condition number four. Signage shall conform to the Greenfield and CCC signage regulations. Right, Peter?
Yes, I am.
All right, and then the fifth condition would be hours of operation. I'm not voting, so you guys are gonna have to wrangle this on your own.
So I think it was Jim earlier. Did you have those hours of operation? I did not write them down that we did before.
I did it under the Legion website. It's Monday through Saturday, ten to eight, Sunday, eleven to six.
And is that consistent among all the? There are other sites in town?
There's a total of your site will be the fifth site, and right now the Legion is the only one that's open.
Yeah, so everybody.
But do we set conditions on the other sites?
Yes. Yes.
Were they the same?
Roughly.
I don't think so, Walter.
Okay.
Now, what is the what is the applicant requesting again?
They want ten to ten, except for Sunday. They want Monday through Saturday.
Nine to ten.
Nine to ten, which is all the hours of operation allowed by the CCC. And then they want on Sunday ten to eight. Was that right?
Yes.
All right.
Actually, the CCC would allow them to open at seven.
Yep, yep.
I look at this like a liquor store, and if a liquor store can be opened from nine till ten, why wouldn't this establishment be able to do that?
Well, again, well, I'm I'm not at disagreement, but, you know, if I think we need to going forward, if that is the approach we take, then I think we should allow other applicants with the same same criteria.
Yeah, I would agree.
So what's the motion or what's the condition of hours of operation?
Well, I agree with Walter. We're gonna allow liquor stores, and they're open seven days a week with those hours. I'm not sure. I'm not sure Ryan and Casey is open on on Sundays that late, but they know they're open.
Big Y, yes.
Whatever the liquor store store is.
All right, so somebody has to punch the hours up.
I would I would I would add as a condition that the hours are nine until ten Monday through Saturday. And I'm sorry, but I I forgot what what was being requested on Sunday.
I think it was ten to eight.
Ten to eight on Sunday.
Ten to eight on Sunday.
That seems reasonable.
So Walter's moved that that's a condition number five. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Who? Peter, that was you seconding?
Yes.
Yep, okay. So any further discussion on the hours of operation condition? No? Okay, so there's the motion with the five conditions. Is there a second on the full motion?
I'll second.
Jim, you made no Dev made the motion, right?
Yes.
Like, because you can't second your own motion. Great. Peter, was that you seconded? Seconding?
Yes.
Okay, all good. All right, so then we'll vote. Okay. Jim Winn?
No.
Okay. Peter Rosniak?
Yes.
Okay, Deborah Jelks?
Yes.
Walter Boyd?
Yeah.
And Julia Popkin?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes and is declared the super majority of four. Okay, I think that's it for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So you guys now you'll you'll talk to Eric and he'll he'll tell you when it's all written up and signed and sent on to the city clerk and all that stuff. All right, so it won't be tomorrow, but probably early next week. If everybody's ill and healthy and all that good stuff. All right, so congratulations. Good luck. And then I think we have some minutes, yeah?
Yes, we do.
All right, somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion. We accept the minutes from the previous meeting.
I second.
I'll second that.
Is that the meeting September ninth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, it is.
I think it is. Okay, is it? There was motions been made and seconded. Is there a discussion saying none? All okay.
Can't do that.
No, I can't do that. Okay, Maloney says yes. Winn?
Yes.
Rosniak?
Yes.
Yes. Jelks?
Yes.
Walter Boyd?
Yes.
And Julia Popkin?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, I think our business is concluded. Just to let you know, we will have a December meeting. There are three things in the pipeline. I can't remember what they are right off the top of my head. However, the meeting will be, hold on. Oh, wrong one. I mean, look, it will be. I think it's December ninth. Is that? Well, whether it's good or not, that's when it's gonna be.
That's.
That's what it was scheduled for.
All right, cool. All right. Does anybody else have anything for the board? I'm hoping not.
The only thing is, is Eric, when our is I know we need to sign it, and next week's Thanksgiving week, so.
We'll try to get it done before Wednesday.
I will not be around.
I won't be around either.
That's a problem. When when will you not be around starting at?
Noon on Monday.
Eight AM Tuesday until Friday morning, Friday noon time.
I say I'm gonna be gone Wednesday through Friday.
So maybe we should aim for the following Monday?
Yep, that'd be good.
Okay, let's do that then. And before I go, I should note for the record that David Singer had recused himself from tonight's both applications because he had conflicts. So that's why he wasn't here. All right, that's it. All right, I'm good. Everybody else good? Julia, are you good?
I'm good.
Excellent. Okay, then. What?
Everybody have a good Thanksgiving?
Yeah, likewise.
Yes, you too, guys. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Take care.
And stay safe and, you know, wear your mask when you're eating your turkey or whatever.
Goodbye.